Be able to start.
Good evening, President Molson. This is Kawai Back. Yes, it looks like all board members are here except for Wes Cagle at the moment.
Okay, and I knew he was going to be late. So if all the board members are present, then we can start the meeting. And so there was nothing to action taken in closed session. So we can start with the flag salute. Do we have the flag?
Okay. Kawai will get it.
Okay.
All right, please, please join us in saluting the flag. I pledge United States of America to the republic which it stands, one nation, and
Okay, so item D, teleconference board meeting protocol.
Okay, very good. And I would like to say that, that again, really appreciate since March, we've been conducting our Zoom meetings and just just everyone's willingness to work together so that we just share emails that come the day before. So wanted to review a few things how to follow the protocols. One is that, and this is myself included, when we're not speaking, please make sure that we are muting. And when we're done, if we've made public comment, if I'm a director, the superintendent, we presented, we're done, if we could make sure that we mute. Secondly, I know that board meetings can be really, you know, there's some very important information that people want to react to. I'm going to ask, we really ask that you not use the chat box to do that. We use the chat box during our meetings so that we know who is going to make public comment. So we're going to ask that you please not use the chat box to provide other comments. That just helps the small number of our, what I'd call our production team, be able to make things run smoothly. So again, our board meetings work is that we do support public comment in three ways. One through teleconference, one through those who are by phone only, and then also by email. So we'll start first, and if I could also say this, is that our meeting is being recorded. And then when we post the agenda and the minutes, that we also include the recording of this meeting as well. So again, we'll start with, with items, these will be items that are on the agenda. If you wish to make public comment concerning an item on the agenda, and you are joining us for teleconference, if you would now, please go to the chat box and type your name and the topic on the agenda topic. So again, your name and the agenda topic, please put it in the chat box now. About 15 more seconds, and then Kawai, I'll turn it to you to let us know if we do have public comment at this time for not to do it now, but just so that we know for planning purposes. Kawai, do we have any public comment pertaining to a topic for tonight?
Dr. Sher, we do not have any public comments at this time.
All right. Next, I'm going to move to those of you who are joining us by phone only. If, if you would unmute your phone, and again, if we can be patient to listen one at a time, if anyone has joined us by phone and would like to make public comment, if you could please state your name and the topic, and Kawai will, will record that for us. Thank you very much. And Kawai, I'm just going to check here, I did not hear anyone at this time that wanted to make public comment by phone related to a topic item. Would you confirm that?
That's correct.
All right. And then Board President Molson and Board Trustees, I'd like to know, we do have one public comment pertaining to the item on reopening, the reopening schools model. We do have one email public comment that when we get to that agenda item, I will read that to the board. All right. So Board President Molson, I'm going to turn it back to you.
And Karen, that's item 192.107, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, so with all that said, let's move on to item E. We'll go to reports. And we have LCAP goal two, update, learning continuity, and attendance plan.
Right, Donna Whitlock, Director of
I wanted to start out by saying that the learning continuity and attendance plan is a state accountability plan for reopening schools. It also includes the alignment of our budget with the requirements of the different section of the plan. So as we move to work and complete this plan, there will be a budget, a budget aligned with each section. So I want to quickly just go over a few different key points. First of all, the timeline, it's a very, very quick turnaround time. It replaces the LCAP for the 2021, 2021's full year. We haven't received the final planned template, which you have in your board packet, is the draft, and it may change slightly on August 1st, when we hope that it comes out. Something important that you saw in the draft template is that it requires stakeholder feedback opportunities, multiple opportunities. And so we're going to need to work on this plan, and at the same time, between August 1st and August 19th, we're going to make sure that we're reaching out in a variety of ways to our community, our parents and our staff to get feedback. Some of the feedback we can use, for example, are the surveys that we've sent out, you know, at the end of the school year. So we do have some feedback on the programs that we're planning for. The next one is a public hearing. The public hearing needs to come before the actual consideration for adoption. So our public hearing for the continuity and attendance plan will be on the August 26th board meeting. And then we are going to ask for approval at September 23rd board meeting. So you can tell that, and all of our the additional funds are contingent upon the approval of this plan by the state. The second part you have in your board packet, and I'm just going to quickly go over the different, the different components. I talked about the stakeholder engagement. The second one is the continuity of learning. The, the state is asking for some rigorous and some high expectations to be involved in the planning of the distance learning and in-person learning this year. They will not, they will not accept on the waiver that we received last spring during the emergency closure. The in-person and instructional offerings, distance learning program. We know that our Director of Curriculum, Cleo De Porangueano, has been working tirelessly with a, with a group of teacher leaders who are addressing the portions of this plan on what the in-person will look like, what the distance learning will look like. The third part of the plan is addressing student losses. We're going to need to look and we need to talk about the strategies, what we're going to do to address the, the learning that needs to be made up by some students. Section four is mental health and social emotional wellbeing. I just wanted to point out, that includes support for student and staff. Although we're starting with the distance learning, that doesn't exclude us from providing those social, emotional, and mental health supports. So our social workers, our counselors, our expanded learning supervisor, will all be working with families during this time. There's pupil engagement and outreach. You know, typically, when a child is absent three or more days, we start the, the SAR process, the attendance process. Won't have a regular SAR but the beginning of the year. We need come up for strategies for students who are not participating in the distance learning program. We also need to make sure that our students are taking advantage of the nutrition, the lunch program that we're offering. And finally, the sixth component is the increased or improved services for our high needs and high needs learners. That's foster English learners, low income. It's our learners that are on IEPs as well. And when we talk about the, the work that we would like to do, bringing small groups back on campus for high needs, that would be one of the places that we would address it in this part of the plan. Again, this is just a draft, but we expect, we expect the final draft to look similar to this. Are there any, do you have questions on the learning continuity and attendance plan for this year? No, no. Okay, you know, as we work with our teachers' union, with, with the teachers' group, and we start to work with our parent, you know, our parent advisory committees, we will, we will keep you informed. Although that the next time we will meet, unless we have a special board meeting, will be in August, when we bring it to public comment. At that time, the public not only can comment, but also our board, and we can make revisions, and we can, we can have additions to the plan right up until we ask for approval in September. Karen, anything else you'd like to add to this?
Okay. Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have LCAP goal four, River Oaks Modernization Project Update.
Right. Good evening. I just wanted to share a little, share a few pictures before and after photos. River Oaks has been under construction for the past few months, and we are getting close to finish. We'd be finished out there within just the next couple of weeks. That school has really had exterior makeover. All buildings, all buildings have been painted, portals, a lot of dry rot and plywood based on the portals, roofs then resurfaced, repainted. The permanent building's got a 20-year warranty in the roofs, 10-year warranty on the portals. There's been a lot of masonry, brickwork, a lot of bricks cracked or chipped. We had some missing pieces of brick. All of that has been redone and painted. It looks really nice. The brick has been painted. Also from the new pictures there, you can hardly tell that it's brick, but it's been painted. We're just really happy with the progress out there. SBB James has been a great contractor. This is, I think, third or fourth project we've worked with them on, and PBK are architects as well. We will be bringing you the notice of completion at the August board meeting. But just wanted to give you an update and some pictures that the project is on schedule. We have stayed within the budget, and we'll be bringing all that information to you at the, at the next meeting to close out this project. But another exciting modernization, thanks to Measure K funds. Any questions on River Oaks project?
Hey Lois, I just have a quick question. So none of that roofing had to be replaced? It was good enough that it could just be resurfaced and like repainted?
No, it's a resealant that goes on over the roofs. It has a 20-year warranty. There were certain areas that did have, that needed to be replaced. The engineers and the architects went through everything. The gutters, some of the gutters had to be replaced, but they got it back up to where we have a 20-year warranty on it.
Oh, excellent. Okay, yeah, because I mean, I know what before looked like. I've walked that school before, and so I was just surprised. I kind of thought that maybe the entire roofs need to be replaced, but obviously SB James knows what they're doing, and you got 20, 20 more years out of it. So, so excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, in 10 years, there was a resurfacing, a sealant product that was put on the, the roofs for the portables, and with that product, we have a 10-year warranty for the portables.
It looks really nice. We, we walk almost daily, so we've watched the progress from the beginning to how it looks now. It's really nice.
Yeah, you know, Lois, thank you so much to someone who's hit the ground running with all these construction projects. You've done a really commendable job, and I feel really good about how we expended Measure K funds, and obviously, couldn't have happened without you. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. I, I really enjoy that part of my job. We've done a lot of work this summer, maintenance-wise too. Within the next couple of months, we'll bring you some updates on, on what we've been working on with our routine maintenance funds as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Our schools are looking very nice. So thank you for all that hard work. Any other comments on the River Oaks project? Okay, so let's move on to other reports. First, we have the budget report update.
Okay, so I just wanted to give you some budget information, some updates from the School Services July workshop. I'll go through most of these slides pretty quickly. I know this was also in your packet. Some of the information we've already talked about. Some of it might be new for you. We can go ahead, Kawai, go to the next couple of slides there. We'll go to the next. There we go. So, you know, everyone's wondering, you know, how long is this going to last? What's a prediction for recovery for our economy in California? The good news is that it's, we're still projected to get out of this pretty quickly. You can see the, the big negative dip there in 2020, but the next couple of years, we are projected to get out of this and get back up to 2018. Another, something important that just came out too so far, the personal income tax, it was extended to July 15th. That is coming in ahead of what was planned, exceeding expectations at 20% right now. So hopefully, this is a true picture that we will get out of this sooner than later. Good thing that our state did have a decent rainy day fund. When this started, $16 billion in the rainy day fund account that Governor Newsom has, is using about half of that, that fund account to go into this 2021 budget. We've talked a lot about deferrals. That is something that is still real. We'll talk more about that in future slides. But our first deferral will start February of 2021. Hopefully, you know, right now, the expected deferrals, you can start over $10 billion. Hopefully, if more federal aid comes in, you can see those deferrals may be reduced by almost $6 billion. So hopefully, that more federal aid will be coming in, and we won't be taking out or borrowing as much money to pay bills this next year. Risk to the state budget, there's still a lot that can happen out there. There is still a possibility that there'll be a budget revision at the state level in the fall. You know, continued record of unemployment, revenues are drastically less than what was projected, but hopefully we'll still see it, this, this trend of personal income taxes higher than expected. So hopefully, this will continue to turn around. Looking at education budget, we can go ahead and go to the next slide there, Kawai. If you look at 2021 Prop 98, as we've talked about, you know, if you look at what was projected, the governor's budget in January to now, and in June and July, the adopted budget, you know, $14 million decrease in funding for education, just Prop 98 there. Enrollment trends, we've talked a lot about this as well. It doesn't look good for California. You can see that we're still expected to decrease in ADA and students over the next eight years. You can see it's a pretty deep decline there. The next eight years, we will see what happens with enrollment trend here in California in the next six to eight years. Hopefully, that will, will go up. COLA, of course, as we know, there is no funded COLA. Something to note here, that middle bullet, while yes, legislature can say there were no cuts made to education, the elimination of the COLA is a cut for us because we, we need that COLA just to cover our step in column and our increased costs to pensions and healthcare every year. So it is, it's still a cut for us when we do not receive a COLA. Budget deferrals, I think we'll go to the next slide for this one, because I want to show the dates. Thank you, Kawai. Again, we are looking at some deep deferrals starting in February. And these are considered budget deferrals because they are going all the way into the following year. You can see in February 2021, we won't receive those funds until the following fiscal year in November. And then you can just see those timelines going across. We're expected to continue with deferrals all the way through June of 2021. And I know we've talked about this, but we are anticipating that we will need trans, we will need to take out loans to make payroll, February through June. We're doing careful cash flow analysis right now, and that we have to turn into the county office in August, also with our budget revisions. But we are anticipating anywhere of $5 to $8 million in loans that we will need to take out if these deferrals really happen in these amounts of federal aid does not kick in. You can see, this was a nice illustration, that you can just see what happens to the loss of COLA over the next three years. We really do not receive COLA as, as projected. For the next few years, you can see that gap of what will happen by 2023. If we continue to, to elect this with no COLA. Attention rates, this is a positive. You can see that chart shows you, the next two years, our employer rate has dropped, which definitely does help our budget. The state is going to contribute more for Calpers and Calsters. That definitely is helping us for the next two years. Special education, our SLPA will be receiving additional funds. Our SLPA is currently funded at about 540 per ADA, and they will receive that difference to pay up to $625 per ADA. So we will get to see how that will be and how that will affect us, but our SLPA will be receiving more money for special education. CARES Act, I wanted to just outline what we, as a district, are receiving based on these funds. The first one there, the ESTR funds, the 1.6 billion for GALT Elementary, we received $1 million out of those funds. And combined there for the GEAR funds, the Governor's Emergency Education Relief, and then the Corona Relief Fund, combined there, we are receiving $2.8 million. So between all of the CARES Funds Act, we are receiving 3.8 million, almost $4 million for our district. And all but 1.2 million of that has to be spent by December of this year. And so we're, our budget revisions will show those funds and how we are allocating to spend that by December. This was just a quick slide to show you how they determined how much LEAs we're going to get based on the CARES Act. It was based on your population of students with disabilities. It was based on your supplemental concentration grants, and also based on your LCF portion. That's how they determined that we received that $3.8 million. Layoffs for certificate and classified layoffs. The August layoff window did not come into effect. There was a hold put on that. So non-admin certificated positions will not be laid off this fiscal year. And what the governor also did was put a hold on reductions for custodial staff, transportation staff, and child nutrition staff as well. Reopening schools. So we will be talking a lot about this, but I thought this was a good slide that kind of outlines the difference with distance learning now. Now that we're not in emergency closure, now that we have a little bit of time to plan for distance learning, there will be some big changes. Making sure that we can provide technology, making sure that our instruction is aligned to grade level standards. There's quality, there's equity, how we're supporting English learners, students with disabilities, foster youth, homeless youth, accommodations that we need to provide within IEPs. Our students will still need to take the English Language Proficiency Test, and we also will have to provide daily live interaction with teachers and classmates now. Attendance, and Donna talked about this a little bit, we'll, we'll be bringing you plans, but we also have to have a plan for taking attendance daily. We also have to have a plan of reaching out to families and students that are absent more than 60% of a school week. And so we will be bringing those plans to you as well. Daily notification for parents also of absent students. I think we can go ahead and skip that one, Kawai. I know Donna talked about that. Moving on to summary and perspectives and kind of next steps for us, we are at that point, a 45-day budget revision. Fiscal team is working on it now. You can see, this slide shows you what we're, we're adding to this budget or what we're taking out of the budget now, based on this revision. November, or sorry, not November, August 13th is our date that we have to post the budget, and we will be bringing it to you at the August board meeting. You know, the road ahead, well, certainly, I think the budget's probably as best as it could be right now, under these uncertain times. Especially very thankful for the federal aid that we are receiving to, we really need that to open up schools right now. Although cash deferrals and, you know, the difficulty of opening schools this way is probably one of the most difficult years education has really ever faced. Budget checkpoints, we still don't know, there could be a state budget August revision. They're saying it probably is not likely because legislation is going on there, on their recess. So really, it's what's anticipated is that our next official budget checkpoint will not be until January 10th of 2021 at the state level. All right, I know that was pretty quick, went over a lot of slides, but any questions? Right now, at this point, you might have more questions, and it might look more real to you in August, when you see the numbers and how this is impacting us.
Hey Lois, I just have one question. If, if COLA is statutory at 2.31%, how does the state get away with zero?
The state, the, does not have to fund COLA. It's based on state revenue, based on Prop 98. It does not, it does not mean, just because there's a statutory COLA, it does not mean that the state has to fund it.
Okay, so A's, okay, because I'm just reading your slide, I thought it meant that, that 2.31 was the minimum statutory COLA. But what you're saying is COLA is provided for by statute, but there's no minimum or maximum set.
No.
So
That is
May or may not provide one.
That is a stat, that's what the cost of living adjustment should be, and we will have that number every year, but it doesn't mean that you will be funded at that level.
Does it vary from year to year based on like, consumer price index and things like that? It's, it's what determines it?
Yes, and you could be funded at a lower level, or you could be funded at a higher level as well.
Or zero.
Or zero.
Okay, well, thank you. That explains that.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a sense that, that we know how much the deferrals will cost us in terms of the loans that we're going to have to get to kind of keep things flowing?
I, we are working with our county office, and we're also working with FICMAT. We're attending a workshop next week. They are looking at pulling districts together for what they're calling a TRAN pool, so we can get a better interest rate. And they are saying interest rates are low. I don't have a cost estimate yet. They did ask us, FICMAT asked us to give them an estimate on how much we think we might need to borrow and how soon we would need to borrow. And right now, we gave them the number of between $5 to $8 million, and we would need to borrow it as soon as February. So I think they're getting a, a sense right now from all of the districts on how much, what our loan might be, what our loan pool could possibly be. And then we'll be able to get a, a better projection of interest rates, but they are telling us that they're expecting interest But they are telling us that they're expecting interest rates to be pretty low.
Okay. Let me share a couple of things here. One is that for our Board of Trustees and our audience, I know that there have been some challenges with our audio this evening in some cases. And I apologize for that. And sometimes you would think that where we're, if we are in the office, that it would be even better than at home, but we're a bit challenged. So I hope that I'm not crackly, I'm not sure. But I know that sometimes when that's happened to me, I've just restarted. I was going to suggest that maybe to a couple of our directors to maybe log out and come back in, see if that will help.
Do I need to log out, Karen, am I crackly?
Yes.
Yes. I'll log out and see if I can come back in.
Okay. And then, you know, we do have stalling a little bit here, but I'll share that in our meeting protocol, we have something called Board connectivity, connectivity interrupt, interruption. Should a board member lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed five minutes before reconvening. So I'm just checking right now for our wonderful Board President. President Mollson is that she got kicked out at the teleconference. I know she's trying to get back in and I know that she can join us by phone. But if it would be all right, if we could just hold five minutes? If that is soon, if, if that will meet the board's needs? And then if not, I mean, if we, if Gracie is not back on in some way in five minutes, perhaps Tom Silva, you know, as next in line here, that you would continue the meeting till Gracie gets back on? Would that be acceptable? At least five minutes?
Yeah, I think we have an agreement. So what do we have for exact time here? I'm looking at. Yeah, because I have, what, 7:36? So. 7:41?
Okay, all right. That will give us, so again, if, we'll, we'll see if we can get Gracie back on here in some way.
Absolutely.
I apologize, Board members and our audience, and we'll, we'll work to see what we can do. Thank you so much.
No, I appreciate you pointing that out too. So we'll re-adjourn at 7:41.
Yes, thank you. Gracie Mollson, President Mollson. Oh, okay, let me, let me take a look here and see, that'd be awesome. See, I'm looking for you right now, Gracie, and I know everyone can hear me. But, and, and we'll start back in just a few minutes. That's great if you're back on. Can you test your audio, Gracie?
Yes, I'm back.
There is some, there is some echoing.
Oh, I was on the phone as well, but I don't think you guys could hear me on that. That was weird.
Okay, perfect, okay, that's wonderful. Okay, and again, we just have a few more minutes here. We, what we're doing, you maybe heard what was happening then. We just.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, perfect, okay.
Okay, I'm back, let's hope, I'm back for the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, we just have had some technical difficulties. Our batteries are all charged. And I think what I might do, if someone could give, when I do speak, if someone gives me a sign, then I will just go to audio only. That sometimes helps the, the signal. Good, good plan, Donna, thank you.
Yeah, Donna, I'll do the same if I start not getting good connection out here.
Dr. Shower, just, just for information purposes, I received a comment that Comcast Wi-Fi is out in some of GALT, so that may be part of the problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bach. Quiet, Mrs. Bach, was the start time with 7:42, something like that? Is that what our start time was again? Or restart time?
Sorry, I was, I was muted. 7:41?
Is that when we were to start back?
Yes.
Okay.
Know that the time is, is on my, on my cell phone at 7:39 right now. It may, it may be different on your computer.
It is, it is, very good, okay. We'll get there. Kawai, maybe you can, you can signal us when we're at the start time? One more minute. Okay, very good. Okay, Board President Mollson, it's 7:41.
I'm back, I apologize, technical difficulties. Did Lois finish her presentation?
Yes, she did.
She did? Okay, because that's where it froze up for me. So then, do we just move on to the next item? Right?
Yes.
Okay. Like, I don't know what to do, all right? So, thank you, Lois, what I saw was dire but fabulous work from you as always on the budget. And so other reports, we have the Williams Uniform Complaint Process Quarterly Report.
Yes, and for the quarterly report related to the sufficiency of textbooks, emergency, emergency school facilities issues and vacancy or misassignment of teachers for the period of April through June, there were no complaints.
Right, thank you. So we're moving on to the consent calendar. And so do we want to? Karen, do we have any donations or retirements that we want to discuss?
We do not, we do not, President Mollson.
Okay. So then, do I have a motion to approve item 192.105, the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent counter.
One second.
Thank you, Board members. I have a motion from John Gordon to approve the consent calendar, seconded by Thomas Silva. Wesley Kegel? I saw you motion I. Grace Mollson?
I.
Matthew Felix?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we're moving on to action item 192.107. And we do have a public comment on this. Do you want to do the report first?
Yeah. If that would be acceptable, yes.
So really quick, would it go broad board discussion, public comment? Or would it go background, public comment, board discussion?
Again, a suggestion could be that we do background, public comment, and then go to board discussion, and it's, it's just a suggestion.
That works for me. Thank you.
All right. All right, so again, good evening again, everyone. What I'd like to do for this action item is provide a brief overview and about kind of where we were as of last week, last week on Tuesday, what happened, the progress that we've made, the recommendation that we're making for tonight. I have asked our directors to assist me with the background to provide you. And then we also have a, a guest or what I'd want to say somewhat of a, a learning partner, Prasad Ram, who will join us to, as a follow-up to some of the conversations we've had about how it is that we ensure equity and excellence in this very challenging time when we're looking at learning happening, happening anytime, anywhere, and that changing, you know, throughout the year. So as, as I have said more than once, is that we really have been striving to prepare for everything and anything. And the metaphor I've used, and as I've worked with just great, great people within our district and the community and beyond, is that it has felt with a, like a winding road. And as Alonis Morris, the singer-songwriter, would say, and every day we get a little bit closer. It's just a winding road. And, you know, what had happened even prior to the board meeting last Tuesday was that, you know, we, as you know, Board of Trustees, there is, there has been feedback that we've gotten beginning in May with the leadership of our Director of Curriculum, Claudia del Toro Anguiano, a survey that was done with different strict stakeholders, what the thought was at that time. There was additional survey that Donna Whitlock conducted with parents. And then going into last Tuesday's board meetings, there were conditions that were beginning to change in terms of the transmission of COVID-19. There were calls that even though with staff and parents that a couple of months ago were, were just, just speaking so clearly and wanting to have on-campus learning happen, that was the goal that we were striving to do to reopen. The conditions were changing. And so with all of that, what happened last Tuesday is that the board did not take action in terms of the initial plans for reopening, but gave, provided direction that we want to talk to you about in terms of the progress we've made from the direction that you gave us. And we're prepared to do that, but things changed day to day. Because the Wednesday of last week, what had happened in the Sacramento County and specifically with my involvement with this, is that superintendents in Sacramento County, as we were working with Sacramento County Public Health and understanding that there were two critical issues that were needed to be shored up to be able to reopen. One would be that we would not see, be seeing increasing and concerning transmission of COVID-19 within our communities. And secondly, in order to reopen, we need to have the level of testing resources and timely results. Those two areas, we were not assured by County Public Health that, that we were ready with that in our county to serve each of our districts. And so, yes, I came forward to support a letter that was prepared on behalf of every superintendent in Sacramento County stating that we recommended that we needed to start the year because of those two reasons with distance learning. So then what happened, then what happened is that on Friday, Governor, Governor Newsom launched updated direction by the state public health. And I will just read this direction that came out. And it had to do with this, that if a local health jurisdiction has been on the monitoring list, so if a county has been on the monitoring list for COVID-14 data within the last 14 days, the school must, must conduct distance learning only until their county has been off the monitoring list for at least 14 days. So that was part of the winding road last week that we faced for a school district that had developed schedules that would serve either half of our students or all of our students at school to move towards a state requirement as of last Friday that we, because we are on the Sacramento County list, to be monitored, that we, we need to reopen with a distance learning model. So that was communicated and that was the winding road of last week. Tonight, what we plan to do is provide you with an update of, related to the direction that you gave last week with the transitional plan that we presented to you. Because we've made some revisions to that transitional reopening plan. And that we also have not lost sight of what stakeholders and you and myself, what we were talking about in terms of what we would be implementing more deeply this school year. And that was looking at how we could deepen the person and personalization through attention to social, emotional. And access, and how it is that we not lose sight of that when now we're looking at a transitional model that starts with distance learning. And that as the model progresses, children are either at home or at school and progressing where they're at school, but in socially distant way until we could arrive back at a traditional setting. And the challenge of how it is that we can be responsive to the learning in equitable ways, no matter where the learning is taking place. And we have been a district that has been highly learner-centric, very learner-centered. And there are, are areas that we are addressing to not lose sight and to deepen that work, no matter where the learning takes place. So I'm going to, with this question and then transition to the model and to our Director of Curriculum and Director of Ed Services, is how do we support learning excellence in this new and challenging time with an initial plan for reopening to move forward that starts with distance learning? And so Kawai, if you would move towards the model that has been revised? And again, I'm going to turn this to our Director of Curriculum, Director of Ed Services. And then again, I would ask you to then introduce our, our special class partner, Prasad Ram, when we, when the time is right. All right, so Claudia del Toro?
Thank you, Karen. So based on the feedback that the board gave last time we met, edits were made to this model. Now, you had suggested that we start with distance learning and that we end with traditional. There was another column that was removed so that this would provide a little more clarity. You had asked for triggers that would cause either a classroom, a grade level, or a school to move, or the district to move within those models that you see. And that language was added. And. And I think it's just, I think it's a better visual, a cleaner visual of how we can reopen schools. Again, we will start with Level 1, ideally moving to Level 2, when public health recommends, together with board direction, moving to the modified traditional that we were planning for originally. Again, based on. that we were planning for originally, again, based on public health recommendation and board direction. And ideally, moving to the traditional model, level four, in which the public health would give us the green light to, to go ahead and start with all the children at, at school.
No, and I just wanted to add that the reasoning behind removing the fifth column, the home learning program, is because what you see in front of you from levels one to four, these levels are fluid and dependent upon the, the health conditions in our public health officer. Whereas the fifth option is an alternative option for education and is not dependent upon the current health pandemic. So the, the home learning program, which we'll talk about in, in just a few minutes, it is not part of this initial reopening model, but it is a model that we are exploring. We just knew there was some confusion around where does that model fit into the initial reopening plans?
So with that, I think we're going to turn it over to our guest. The last time we met, I believe it was, it was Wes and Tom who had asked for a little more information on Guru. So know that we have been working with PRAM. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with PRAM for the past few years on co-creating the program that we're using in some of our classrooms at Valley Oaks. So PRAM, we're going to turn it over to you. Thank you again for joining us this evening and guide us on what you have.
Great. Thank you very much, Cleo and Karen. So, one second. So the, so good evening, everybody, the board members, parents and public citizens and GALT educators and staff. I'm Prasad Ram. I go by PRAM. And just a quick context here is I run a nonprofit organization called Guru. I previously was, used to head Google Books for Education at Google. And I ran Google India for five years before that. So my background is a computer scientist and engineer. And I have, you know, in the past several years, been working in the education space to bring the value, work with the, co-create the whole solution that is, that we have worked with GALT in particular. So I can briefly point out what is the challenge that, and what is the approach that we have been taking, right? So we kind of looked at, not that education is broken and let's fix it. We said, hey, there is an ecosystem that already works. Let's work with them to enable them to accelerate outcomes. So, so the, our approach has been, the challenge we saw with the whole learning space is that it focuses on the destination. So one of the large teams I led while I was at Google was on Google Maps. So I think, I think in terms of Google Maps, right? So was that the, we have curriculum standards, textbooks, everything designed for the destination. We just don't know where the learner is. And we don't know where the learner is at start or anytime during their journey. And our job is to navigate the learner from wherever they are to a destination that we have, you know, previously established. So kind of if you think about the whole Google Maps experience that each of you have, then it's always super critical to know where you are. So that even if you make a wrong turn, there's no harm. As long as the arrow also turns that way, then you know that it's going to put you back on track. So we are a learning technology, research and technology nonprofit organization. And we have developed the Google Maps for learning. And I'll kind of talk a little more about that. And what is very important about that is that as a nonprofit organization that is focused on developing research and technology, we are not a vendor. So we have been co-creating this with GALT and a couple of other school districts and working with a lot of the research faculty to bring in the science of learning practice. So I kind of, so what we have developed is unlike, in the case of Google Maps, clearly there's you, the user and the system. But in the case of learning, in addition to the student who has, you know, what I'll shortly show you is the Google Maps like experience, there is the instructor or the teacher who we have defined the GPS for learning for the teacher as like an air traffic controller. So she can see where all her students are and how they're progressing and performing, and she can personalize the intervention. And then for the administrators, of course, the school system also has administrators.
It's not.
What is it, Donna?
It's like.
I'm sorry. Anybody has difficulty with?
I'm so sorry, PRAM. Someone unmuted accidentally.
Okay. So in terms of the administrator, the interface we have looked at is like mission control. Everybody is distributed. Everybody is at different places. And particularly the pandemic situation makes things even more acute. So how do we give real time data to all administrators so that they can kind of scale success? And we have a fourth tool for the curriculum designers. So I kind of mentioned two more things on the slide. So what does it mean to locate the learner with high precision? With Google Maps, you cannot say I need to go to Sacramento Airport, but I'm somewhere in the United States, right? You kind of have to give it a far more precise definition of where you are. Then it can give you turn by turn directions to get you to Sacramento Airport. So the way we look at it is there are many facets to learning that there is an access here. And for facets of learning could be like social emotional learning, could be a core subjects, could be soft skills and so forth. For each facet of learning, there are many domains. And for each domain, there are a set of competencies. Now, similar to Google Maps, we kind of visualize three states. You have not started your journey in gray. You're on route or you're studying in light blue. We have reached your destination or you have mastered a competency in dark blue. And the line that connects the highest competency you have mastered across all the domains, we call that a skyline. So every student has a skyline per facet, right? So, so now that is our representation of where the learner currently is and how that changes. Now, the set of competencies that a student needs to gain by the end of the school year, let's say to achieve grade level proficiency, we call that a high line. So every student's journey is from their skyline to the high line. So it's not like everybody has to journey to the high line and we teach only to the high line. We teach to where the skyline is for the student and then let them progress at their own pace, based on where they are to the high line. Yeah. So, so basically the whole, and one of the important things we learned working with GALT in the past two years, implementing this and developing this, has been that GALT uses a number of other tools, right? So a number of other tools that different, you know, for English Language Arts or math and middle school students or primary students and so forth. So we get data from all these different tools, or that's what GALT wanted, is to get data from all these different tools so that we can understand the learner across all their activities, not just on the navigator. So this is something that we have been putting together and I'll kind of talk about it as to how can we take all the data from all the different tools, then centrifuge it in some sense metaphorically, so that we can now understand the learner very completely and come up with the pathway for the learner. Yeah. So this kind of the core essence, and like I said, we are a nonprofit organization. We have developed these tools and we are keen to, and we have been working with, we have today over seven million users and across the US, India and 27 other countries, but mostly out of US and India. And we have been working with GALT and a couple of other school districts to co-create this entire product. So I'm going to share this presentation with you and you can kind of look, watch these short videos on different aspects of the navigator. But I wanted to share a couple of our teachers' feedback on their use of Guru. So one teacher kind of, you know, says that particularly in this context of remote learning or distance learning, she says, I don't have to be worried about my students. And they have been using Guru at school or at home all year long because the system is learner centric. It doesn't matter whether the learner is, where the learner is, how the learner learns, with whom does the learner learn and so forth. And right now, her class is averaging 83% on all the new material, which is phenomenal. And the, you know, so basically the feedback from the teachers who have been piloting this with us has been fantastic. And we are now ready to kind of scale it completely. So what I will cover in this quick demonstration is the four tools. The student experience, which, you know, equals Google Maps, the instructor, the administrator and the curriculum designer experience. So, you know, if there are any questions, Kawai and Karen, how would you like me to handle that? Do we wait till the end of the presentation?
You know, perhaps do the demonstration of these four areas and then we can, I was thinking that maybe Cleo can talk about a bit what you're hearing from the, some of the teacher feedback, and then we could go to the board.
Okay. So I'll kind of step you through the different experiences. These are fairly complete products, so I won't cover every feature, but I will touch on the high levels, highlights of that. The student starts their navigator on their mobile app. This is available, you know, it was available on their Chromebooks until last year. And because of this, in response to the COVID, we introduced a lot of additional capabilities, one of which is the mobile experience for the learner. So the student picks a journey that they want to take. In this case, the math journey, they confirm their grade and they take a quick diagnostic to answer a few questions. Or the other thing that we have been also doing is to kind of take some data that the school already has from their prior tests or NWA map and so forth. Student submits, in this case, in this demonstration, they submit the answer to the diagnostic and their skyline appears. So these are the domains in mathematics, counting and cardinality, operations and based and fractions. And based on the diagnostic that the student answered, this is where the system located that the student is, as their highlight. The student says, I want to get to grade eight level proficiency. So their high line appears and their journey is going to be from their skyline to the high line. Student says, that sounds right. Give me directions. And now these are very personalized based on where the student skyline was to the high line. So all the gaps in learning, so they could have gaps in learning in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and it doesn't matter. So, you know, like Google Maps doesn't judge you whether you're 20 minutes from the airport, 20 miles from the airport or 40 miles from the airport. So the student says, yep, that sounds good. Start the navigation. Now the navigation begins, which means they're gaining one competency at a time. So they kind of use a variety of learning activities, like they can watch a video or they can actually do a physical project, an offline task, right, or write a proof or an essay and so forth. And they can kind of, you know, read some documents on a website and so forth. And then for all the physical, digital activities that the student did, the system captures the data. But for the physical activity that they did, they scored themselves on the rubric. Of course, the teacher can also grade them on the rubric. In this case, the teacher has set it up that they score themselves on the rubric for this activity. And then for the competency they just studied, they're offered a quick assessment. So the student answers the questions, gets one out of three wrong, doesn't do too well. So the system now offers a reroute suggestion. So basically, the model is you get a route based on your profile and you get reroutes based on your performance till you get to your destination, right? And so student chooses to study the, accept the suggestion and study an additional set of resources. And now it says, show your mastery. And the student kind of answers a few more questions. This time to, does very well, gets everything right, and the skyline for the student bumps up, right? So now, when you started your journey, you were 20 miles from the airport and now you're 19 miles from the airport. So you know that you're making progress and you feel confident. And everybody can take agency about how fast they want to go. You know, of course, in the driving analogy, there are some constraints on that, but in learning analogy, there isn't. So at any time during the journey, the student can click on the progress bar to see where am I in terms of my performance? Where am I in the journey? The straight do line was the original route. And the orange t-tours are the reroutes based on performance that the student had to get. And then where am I in terms of my proficiency? So of course, they can inspect any cell and look at what exactly they did, their portfolio and so forth. And I'll cover some of that when I show you the teacher experience. So this is kind of the student experience and I'll make one last comment on this. So when I led a large team on Google Maps, what I said is it's not about driving directions. It's about eliminating the anxiety of travel. And we do that with two things. One is simplicity of use. Two is assured success, right? And that's kind of the principle that we have brought here, which is simplicity of use. You don't need to know which road is called what, which is one way, which way, or any of these details. All you need to know is to go straight for 1.2 miles and make a right turn, right? So the student doesn't have to worry about what is that depth of knowledge, what is the dependency between competencies and stuff like that? They just need to know what's my next learning activity and kind of engage in that. And everybody gets to their destination. Somebody may get there in half an hour, somebody may take a full hour. So, but you get to your destination. So that's kind of the student experience. I'll kind of start the instructor experience or the teacher experience with what we think of as the air traffic control view. So the teacher can instantly see that Wurun Johnson is kind of struggling, but Jose Smith is acing the class. And someone else, Jillian, is kind of doing well and gaining steam. So basically, they're seeing on the x-axis, there's progress. Y-axis is this performance. And where is my class on the, on the, in terms of their progress and performance? So they can kind of then go and, oh, sorry, log me out. Give me a second. So they can kind of, yeah, then go and look at what is the skyline for every learner in my class. So they get a quick overview of where is my class? And the teacher can be, you know, physically in the school or at home, or the student can be, you know, in classroom or at home and so forth. So none of that matters. It just looks at where is the learner in terms of their learning, knowledge, skills and mindsets. So the teacher can click on Simon's skyline and kind of look at the fact that Simon is doing extraordinarily well in geometry, but he has some gaps in statistics and probability. So she can see that Simon's skyline in thick white line is, you know, reasonably there and close to the high line in many cases, right? So she can also look at where was Simon last year. At the beginning of the school year, he was quite a bit lower. But in the past one year, he has really bumped up. So you get a timeline view. She can inspect, you know, what has Simon done for any particular thing? So what did he do on this particular competency? So it kind of shows his portfolio of what he did. This competency is about solving linear equations with two variables and so forth, and so on. So, so she gets a full understanding of any particular learner in her class. And, you know, for example, if she changed Simon's high line to an algebra, then you can see there are a lot more gaps for Simon. So the point is that students can catch up or go ahead, depending upon how they are. And she can also look at a domain competency report, which is kind of for all students put together. Can they look at the different domains? I can see that in fractions, there are a lot of grace, which means students haven't started studying that. I click into this and see for each of the competency what's happening, right? And I can see that there are a lot of gaps in fractions here. The point being, all of this is auto-generated, auto-computer. The, all we are tracking is what is the learner doing after every learning activity, capturing the data that I showed you? And then, you know, the centrifuge that I explained. So one, the teacher starts with this, kind of this overall view of the cohort. Two, she can drill down into understanding a student at a time where she's understanding the full student, not just what happens in my class. But then third, she can look at the entire course and how is, how are the students doing in my entire course, right? So she can see every student has their own learning journey. So I can click on their names and their journey shows up. But here she's seeing all of their journeys together. She sees that, you know, students are struggling on this standard or competency. So she clicks on that to see what's the data about it. She looks at this assessment. She wants to know what were the questions. She sees the questions here and she sees a lot of them have been struggling on question two. Then she selects students like Dominico and Philip and Anna. And the system makes a suggestion. She accepts the suggestion or she looks at the suggestion. She says she can accept the suggestion and make the suggestion to the students. And it kind of goes as a reroute for them. So there's a reroute. So there's a reroute made by the teacher, not by the system. But the system is offering suggestions to the teacher. Or the teacher can search up for new resources, or she can pick from her own content and her own libraries and so forth. So there are a lot of other ways by, which can get to all the other content that she may have curated in the past. So she can kind of look at any particular student. In this case, I'm looking at Peter and looking at his journey in the first lesson. So you can see that his straight line was his original route, and the orange detours are the ones that he has been offered to kind of reinforce his learning in some cases. So there are again, a lot of other features and functionality here, which I will not cover in the interest of time. So we went from understanding the whole cohort with the air traffic control view to understanding an entire student, to understanding the student in the entire course, to now, the teacher is down to a single class, right? So she has a lot of content that has been curated. These are all open content. And this is based on, this will be based on her scope and sequence, so in the class. So she can look at this collection or this assessment, and she can add it to today's class activity or schedule it later. So this is what she does in a single class where the students are sitting in front of her, or because of the COVID situation, we enable the students to even join the class over a video link. So students can either physically be present in the class or virtually be present in the class. Teacher can add a bunch of activities, either a collection which has different resources that she can use to teach, or assessments. And in this case, when she adds an assessment, she can kind of go live with the class on that assignment. So students answer the questions instantly, and this heat map for the class comes about. So she uses this typically in exit tickets or entry tickets and so forth to just, you know, get a pulse for where the class is. She can see that Dylan, Nicole, and Philip are struggling. She asks them to come to the front of the class to do small group instruction. She'll say, Kelly, can you go help Jillian and Rachel? So do some peer support. Or question number four, my class seems to be getting more, a lot of them seem to be getting it wrong. Let me see how have they answered, and choose to reteach that concept, underlying that. So she has real-time data, and all of this is completely available to her, regardless of whether she's physically in the school or virtually in the school and so forth, and how she's running the class physically or virtually and so forth. So she can do all of that. I'll just kind of mention one more thing, that all the items that she has to grade. So this is not only about digital activities. This is about even physical tasks, like doing a project or writing an essay or writing a proof or whatever. So here, the student has, have submitted all their work, and she can kind of inspect their work and say, yep, that looks good, and I'm going to grade them on this stuff. And kind of grade the students on their work and say, pay attention to units, or provide some. I'm spelling wrong, but yeah. So, but you get the idea that she can kind of work with the class with offline tasks. So we interpret digital learning as not watching videos and answering multiple choice, but digital learning is digital data from full spectrum of learning activities. So that's kind of the instructive experience. There are a lot more details, but we will not cover that. So now I'll kind of show you what is mission control. So how do we provide real-time data to everybody, all these stakeholders? You know, does Karen Shaw have real-time understanding of where her, what's the progress her entire district is making? So you can sign in as different users. So in this case, I'm signed in as a super user, so I can see what's happening US-wide. Or I can sign in as a district admin, which I will do very shortly and show you some of that. So as, I can see, for example, how many competencies were gained in the month of February twenty twenty in the United States? I can kind of look at any of these reports and say, how many new users, new students and new teachers join? Or what is the average time they spent on different types of activities, right? Or what is their performance and proficiency been? And I can kind of drill down and say, hey, where is California? California gained fifteen thousand competencies. Now I can look at specific school districts, and I'll just sign as a district admin to kind of show you that side of the view. So here, the district admin kind of, if they sign in, they start here. For my school district, how many competencies were gained? For any particular school, thousand three hundred competencies were gained. And this grade eight math class that I just showed you, hundred and twenty-two competencies were gained in the month of February twenty twenty. So they can, of course, select as individual student and look at his skyline and all of that stuff as well. So that is the first important thing that we'll enable for the administration, administrators, once we kind of implement this mission control at GALL. So everybody will have real-time data. The second, actually, I'll just come back to partner catalog, but I'll just show you about the learner. So the district admin, based on their roles and privileges, can look up a learner's information. So in this case, I'm looking at Topanga Lawrence, and I'm looking at Topanga Lawrence's information across all her activities. What about her soft skills, social and emotional learning, mathematics, English language arts and so on? So I'm looking at the entire skyline for Topanga Lawrence. So I have a full understanding of who is this learner. So now, the important thing I want to mention is, this does not matter whether the learner has special needs. It does not matter whether the learner is low-income minority. It is every learner, everybody is a special needs kid in my view, right? And every learner has their skyline. Every learner gets a journey with a route, with activities that are most appropriate to them. So now you can drill down and kind of look at, you know, in mathematics, how is Topanga Lawrence doing? I can kind of look at, for example, just need to pull this zoom thing out. So I can look at, for example, all the domains and how she has been working on each of these domains. I can click on a particular domain and look at all the competencies within the domain. I can, you know, for example, also look at her portfolio. What are all the activities? Let's look at the activities, the four activities that she has completed in one of these items here. And what is, what has she done against the four activities? Or look at her preference for resources, how does she best engage with learning? We even compute measures like mindsets. So what are her mindsets? What is her grit? Every time she got something wrong, when we made a suggestion, or the teacher made a suggestion, did she pay attention to it, or she, did she ignore it, right? So we are computing grit, perseverance, and so on, because sometimes you need to actually work on these. We're like, what, you know, we have learned from working with the learning scientists and educators is that when a student gets a science question wrong, it's because they don't know the math. They don't know the math because they don't know word problems. They don't know word problems because they have reading issues. They don't know, have reading issues because they lack self-confidence, right? So trying to fix them on science is not going to actually help. You actually need to support them with self-confidence. And that's kind of where the whole, how the system makes suggestions and all that comes in handy. So the last thing I'll show about this is what we call as the partner catalog. So the school district kind of works with a number of other tools. And this is straight out of the book of Julie from GALL, right? And this was the first thing that we learned from GALL when we met them a couple of years ago. They said, hey, we work with so many different tools. Can we not kind of, we call it an institution learning registry. So the institution has a, or the district has a learning registry of all the different tools. All of these tools kind of contribute data, which goes to a data lake for the, for GALL. And then GALL kind of gives permission to who has access to what data, for what period of time, and so on, so forth. Right now, what you can do is kind of look at Eureka Math, for example, and compare it with all the other providers and how it's working within the system, and kind of see relative coverage and use and assessments and so forth that's happening with all the different providers. So initially, when we launched this in August, only Navigator is writing the data into the district data lake. But the plan is that we will work with each of the technology providers or tool providers to GALL and get them to also write. And we have implemented all the things so that they can write using standard protocols and so forth. So this is the last thing I just want to mention about the whole mission control that we have. And the, I actually just point out one more thing, I'll just sign in as a super user. So this kind of me as a super user, looking at Guru worldwide, and I can look at the collaborators that we work with. We work with fourteen researchers, twenty schools and implementers, GALL as a lab school and so forth. So this is how we are kind of continuously evolving and building this product. And the product is open source, which means it's shared in public. So it's not proprietary to anybody, but we work on that open source so that nobody is trapped by, you know, using the software, because the source code is open. The last thing I'll just quickly mention, and Karen, let me know if I should stop, but I'll take one more minute, is kind of what we call as the library. So the key point here is, I'll just touch upon a couple of things. So you can kind of understand the competency framework. So this is for the curriculum designer, she's looking at standards and how, what the dependencies are and so forth. So we have the complete tree view, so you can kind of look at for math, grade eight math, you know, all the domains that are covered for a given domain, all the competencies for a given competencies, all the micro competencies. For any competency, you can ask, show me all content around this, right? And the thing is, this is like in Google Maps, you saying, show me all coffee shops near me. So competency is like latitude and longitude. And this shows you all the learning activities that you have about that competency. So, and the last thing absolutely is, we have crawled and curated a whole bunch of open resources, which teachers are continuously curating, organizing to build collections and assessments. So I can search on cells, and I'll see all the collections that are there on cells, and I can preview them and remix for myself. I can look at assessments, I can search on quadratic equations and find all the good material that we have, that other teachers, other educators in the system have put together. So people can share, borrow from each other, and build on it and customize the whole thing. So I'll kind of just go back to the slides to mention, so basically, kind of mention the, what we are trying to do at GALL is basically provide, you know, we basically look at it as learning is always open at GALL, right? We want, so schools may be closed, or students may be at home, or teachers may be at home, whatever. All of those configuration, but learning is always on, right? And regardless of which grade, which subject, which learner, what facet of learning that they're pursuing, who the stakeholders are, we have a central data backbone. And all of that data is owned by GALL in the institution data lake that we have. And GALL gives permission, you know, GALL admin gives permission to either their own internal LMS system to access the data, or Navigator to personalize the learning, and so with math learning, where, let's say it's my, we'll start with math learning, and then expand to ELA, science, and pre-K during the course of the year. And we have put together a bunch of training programs so that we can train the teachers and the admins. And the whole process of co-creation will continue. So we are constantly listening and evolving the whole platform.
Yes. Karen, could I have you stay on that slide, if that would be all right?
Yeah.
And just, again, all of this, you know, again, just showing us the range of what we've been able to co-create with you is phenomenal. I wondered if it would be, I was wondering, Cleo? When you are working with teachers at this point, when we're looking at, at how to move forward, we've continued to come back, and teachers have brought up Guru as well. Can you talk about the connection with this work and this plan here in terms of how this could work this school year?
Yes, and something that Lois and Donna had mentioned earlier was the higher accountability level that, that we will be responsible for with the state. And when looking at Guru, I can tell you that I haven't found anything that remotely does what this program can do, the features that Guru has. I have not been able to find it in any other program. So when thinking about how distance learning will be different next year, starting with everything from, you know, now we're taking attendance and we're issuing grades, there's a huge component of how will you ensure that students are making progress? How will you make up for lost learning? So this platform, this, this program can really help us fill in the gaps at a faster level than we can do in the classroom. Or, I mean, right now, through distance learning, the children won't be in front of the teacher for the amount of time that they are when they're with us at school. So to be honest with you, there's no way we can fill in the gaps fast enough for us to teach at grade level, fill in what has been maybe forgotten or lost, or fill in what hasn't been learned, or reteach, or unteach procedures that maybe the children are doing that, you know, they continue to make the same mistakes. So with something like this, and it being at their level, and again, the children deciding what it is that they want to work on, how they want to learn it. Again, I just don't see anything out there that can help at this level. So with the teachers that I have been meeting with, I've been meeting with nineteen teachers, preschool to grade eight, and we really have been talking about how are we going to measure progress? If they're only with us on through the screen for a short period of time, how do you do that? And how do you reach every child? And really, not just the ones falling behind, but the ones that really can go beyond what we can teach at that moment. How do we do that with a limited time? So a thought was that if we were to move forward with Guru, that this would become what they do at home, knowing that they can do it independently. Pram mentioned how it's built so that the children feel successful. I don't know if you remember, but one of the, several of the comments actually that the children made when we asked them, you know, why would you recommend that your principal do to make distance learning better next year? A lot of them talked about math. When we asked about what were some of the challenges, the isolation, but several children said math. So they are asking for help. If you recall the data that I have presented to you over the past three or four years, the area that we continue to struggle with in our district is with math. So again, just looking at what Guru can do, the co-creation, I can tell you that a year and a half ago, I would ask Pram, Pram, can you show me the standards? But can you make the standards be aligned with this? Pram, can you give me this kind of report? And within days, anything that we asked for, they would say, is this what you were looking for? Is this what you need? So it's impressive to work with, with someone that can really respond to the needs. The teachers that are using it from our district have said the same thing. The, the response is automatic. If they ask for something to be color-coded in a different color, it's, it's done. But beyond all that, again, moving into distance learning with new guidelines with a much higher level of rigor. How do we do what we're being asked to do, meet the needs of the children, meet them at their level? Ensure that we're filling in the gaps, ensure that they're moving ahead if they're ready. We just can't do that, you know, through a screen. And even when we're in the classroom, it's really difficult to reach every single student at their level. And again, for the children that are ready to go beyond, this allows them to do that. So we have children in fifth grade that have already completed the sixth grade content. There's no way we could have done that, you know, on our, on our own. So Karen, I just, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, again, that just the accountability alone that we will be required to, to meet, and the rigor, at least in the area of math, I think this can meet our needs.
So I, I wondered this, if there may be board members that either have comments or questions while we're on this? I'm seeing Tom is nodding his head, yes?
Me first?
Yes.
Yeah, first of all, this, this is amazing, this is excellent, you know, as a parent. You know, I got five kids in the school system now, you know, five others that have gone through school system. So I've dealt with a lot of different programs, and I like this in terms So I've dealt with a lot of different programs and then, and I, and I like this in terms of individualized education. My question, of course, as a parent, since we're using this analogy of, you know, Google Maps and it being a navigator and the students being the driver is that me as the parent being, I guess, I would be the, the backseat driver. How does this allow me as a parent to be engaged? Because I'm mostly concerned with how do I support my children? So I need that feedback. I need to understand where my kids are at on that roadmap so that I know how to support them. So, so how does this integrate the parents in, in this, in this whole picture?
Yeah, that's a fantastic question, Tom. Thank you very much. And so as you know, as you realize that we capture detailed data about how student is engaged on every competency, every learning activity. So what we have been, you know, we have been asked for a parent interface and we are working on one. But because of the priority for getting the teacher and the administrator up, we have kind of deferred that. But bottom line, what parents are today doing is signing in on behalf of the student so that they can see their whole skyline and progress and portfolio and everything as if they were. So if you are a parent with two kids, then you have to sign in twice. And what we are building towards, and again, thanks to GOLP, a lot of these inputs that we got was, can you build a parent dashboard so that if I have two kids, I pick the two kids, then I can see both the kids' data, right? It's like what we showed for the teacher where she has thirty kids. But now the parent gets a simpler view of it with two kids and a lot more suggestions from the system as to what they can do about it. But building the parent dashboard is right on our roadmap. And we love to get any additional requirements that you may have on that.
Thank you. One other question then is in terms of parental engagement, because especially like this last spring with five different students trying to, to, to stay on top of what they're doing. For me as a parent, I prefer a proactive approach to their education as opposed to react. Most learning management systems that I'm familiar with will tell me what is, what has happened. And I mean, it's historical information. It'll tell me what, what tests my, you know, my son hasn't taken or what assignments my daughter hasn't turned in. And that doesn't really help me help them as much as if I know that there's a test or an assignment that's due on Friday. Then if I'm aware of it, then I can help, you know, support them better by making sure that they're, that they're working towards that. So I think for parental engagement, you know, reports are nice. But if it's only historical data, I don't think it helps at least a parent like me as much as if it tells me, you know, again, because it is a roadmap. It's like if it tells me, you know, left turn coming up in three blocks, that's a lot better than, hey, you just missed your turn.
Exactly. It's like gives you expected time to learn, gives you the roadmap and gives you all other alternate resources on the roadmap. A year teacher and year school wants, you know, has things that is the right roadmap. But we can tell you what other schools in the country are using, which have, so we compute measures like relevance, engagement and efficacy for every learning activity based on all the data that we have. So we can say, hey, this other activity that is not on your child's roadmap, because your school is using a particular scope and sequence and particular curriculum, is still very, you know, effective from a learning perspective. And so we, we are just building some of that UI specifically for the parent dashboard. But right now till, you know, first week of August, we are heads down on getting the teachers and the administrators to be delighted with us.
Again, thank you very much. This is excellent. I, I've seen a lot of different programs out there and this is, this is excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think Wes had a question. You're on mute, Wes, if you're gonna.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions here. How many kids in the district were on this program last year?
About seventy?
Yeah.
Seventy. Do we have any idea how they, well, I guess we wouldn't have any idea about testing because we didn't test at the end of the year. I was gonna see, I was wondering about like how they tested compared to the kids who didn't have access to the program.
Yeah, actually we have data from their teachers and our, one of our research scientists kind of has been working with their teachers to get the data and that was one of the core part of the court where she said eighty-three percent are doing, you know, they have completed eighty-three percent of all the new tasks that have been assigned to them and so forth. So at least based on the teacher's feedback, what we know is that students, when they can actually track where they are, where their skyline is and that their skyline is bumping up, they kind of are a lot more engaged. And at least the conversation in the class from the student's perspective is last week I gained one competency. This week I want to try and gain two. The conversation from the teacher is on the average last week, my class gained four and a half competencies last month. And this month we are trying to shoot for six, right? So, so this kind of has a gamification element, but it's not kind of some silliness, but it's really gamification, you know, more directly tied to learn.
Although, I'm sorry Wes, but although we didn't do the, the testing in the spring, we could look at map, you know, from the fall to the winter for those children to see what growth was made in comparison to maybe other children who weren't using it.
What's the plan right now for this upcoming year with, with this program?
So the thought. I'm sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, Wes. So the thought right now, we're still drafting the plan on how we will deliver distance learning again while meeting all the state criteria. But the thought right now is that possibly when the children are, when we're doing the live instruction, that we obviously focus on Eureka, grade level content, content that we know is challenging for the children to do individually or independently. And that we would use Guru once they weren't in front of us. Again, with the thought that Guru could fill in the gaps or expand the learning. But while the children are in front of us, then we teach them grade level content in a compacted way, knowing that we have less time with them.
Okay. Then last one, I had, actually had, while this was going on, had some, a parent text me. I'm wondering about like the cost, the cost of this type of program compared to stuff we've had in the past.
Yeah, I'll kind of answer that. So the software is open sourced, right? Which means it's a free and open to use from an open source. But because we provide the hosting and operations and services, we cover our operating cost with the model where we charge about a dollar per user per year, right? So that covers our AWS costs and so on. So like I said, we are not a vendor, we are a nonprofit organization. But to do the implementation and to do the co-creation and all that stuff, we are kind of, you know, we will come up with a plan for talking to Cleo and Karen as to how much effort we need to put in. So that's purely on the implementation and, you know, any enhancements to the features that they want and so forth, that we are going to work for them. But just on a steady state in an operating model, it's a dollar per student per year, right? And, and we just recover our cost like we have millions of users in other parts of the world. And because of all the work that like, for example, one thing that Cleo did not mention is they helped us build a teacher PD course, right? How can we kind of get the teachers a GPS-like experience for their own professional development? And that, that course will also be coming online really shortly for the school year. And so, so the idea, all of this co-creation that we do with GOLP will cost us a lot more effort, but just to operate and use the software itself is a dollar per user per year.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Wes. Okay, were there any more questions? Okay, Karen, then I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Yeah, Cleo, again, the thought is that based on the slide that's up there, why could you go? Well, sorry, we went away from that slide. I was gonna go back to it.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Possible. But based on the slide that we've been watching there in terms of implementation, we're really wanting to hit it running in terms of, of training for this in August. So I mean, that, that was why the timing of this is that we just feel in light of the urgency of catch up and acceleration that needs to happen, that we really want to get this going. And we're, we're working to formalize a contract and accelerate that. Because again, I just have to say, you know, teachers, administrators, and this was beyond Valley Oaks that started the work with Guru several years ago. And then again, you know, some dropped off, there were Valley Oaks teachers that either joined in or stayed on. And that's what, you know, that was part of what, what got it to this point. But I know through my years as a superintendent with you as board members and board members who are no longer on the board, there are questions that you would ask is, is how do you know if this resource is working? And some of the tools that Prem shared with you tonight is a way that we can better get at that when we're looking at certain resources that we're using at children, with children, is it working or not? And then from the student level, that aspect of where suggestions are made for children, for them in terms of their pathway to learn, because that ultimately is what we were going for with children and their independence to be able to know how they learn best. I mean, that's what we're shooting for, you know, and, and that's why this is such a, you know, again, we're not looking to do it for all content areas. We're looking to start with a mathematics focus, but you can see in this plan is that it would ripple out to other content areas. And, and that, and that's our plan is again, to be able to expand this effort and get training going in August with, with Guru. And if I could share one last thing, as I know that we want to talk to you about the Home Learning Academy, it doesn't matter whether it's, again, we have children learning out of school or at home, you know, or full-time at home. This can help support that work for whoever the user is and be able to report to you in real time how things are going in a, in a much more efficient way. Okay, John?
Yes, thank you. So you mentioned earlier seventy students and we're gonna scale this up. So what is the expectation for this school year? Do you have a number in terms of whether we're, we're going to be having more classrooms get involved? Because I would imagine there's some professional development that comes with this and some time to implement it in other classrooms.
And again, we're at the beginning stages. We're still drafting, you know, what it could look like. But we're thinking that this would be launched with fourth through eighth grade students only. And again, that it would be all students because we are held accountable for the progress of every child. How we are reporting that progress, I'm not really sure at this time. But we want to be ready. And again, we don't have anything that can give us the, the type of reports that Guru can. We have been using Khan. We know we can get reports from Khan. We can get reports from Zern. We can get reports from, there's a few other programs that, that we're using that we can get reports from. But what this is doing is actually showing you the progress, showing you the gaps in learning and showing you where the, the student has gained, has made growth. So again, it would only be for math and it would only be when they, when we are asking them to do the independent work in front of the teacher. We will use Eureka. And again, teach grade level content. Once they, the, the children are launched into, you know, independent work, then again, they will work on filling in the gaps or accelerating beyond what we can offer in the classroom, but fourth through eighth grade math only.
And, and just to decide, well, a couple of things to, well, again, I'll just share this. Is that in our work with the McClatchy Foundation, which was previously known as the Central Valley Foundation and the School Readiness Efforts, there is work that Guru is, is co, we're, we're having some conversation of co-creation in terms of working with families at pre-kindergarten level in terms of how to, again, when we're looking at equity and excellence and the use of technology and in person to move that forward, starting with our little ones, which again, the McClatchy Foundation helped us with in terms of Chromebooks getting in the hands of parents so that they can support and go into what Tom Silva brought up. You know, again, that parent aspect, we're very intrigued with advancing that work with Guru and, and possibly working with McClatchy Foundation on that as well. Cradle, cradle to career. So pretty exciting. So, so again, we just, again, at this point, would like to finalize that work with Guru and really get this going in August. That's, that's our plan. Okay, Prem, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. Have a great rest of the meeting and the evening as well.
Very good. Thank you. And if I. This is, as we, thank you so much. There is a segue here because of a journey we've been on in terms of reopening and looking at a model that parents were expressing interest. And in fact, it has an acronym called GLI, Home Learning Academy. So this is a part of the reopening model and an alternative model that I'm going to turn this to Donna Whitlock because as of tonight, I think we started a survey out there again. So if you could briefly go through this with the board in terms of a reopening effort and the GLI, Home Learning Academy.
Okay, I will just kind of give you a brief overview and then you may have some questions for me. But if you recall, when we did a survey our parents on reopening models, many parents, two hundred and forty-eight expressed interest in a, in a home learning program. Because of the health conditions and pandemic and because we were looking at the on-campus model for opening. Well, when the decision was, was given to us that we needed to reopen under the transitional distance learning model for all students, we did need to determine, is there still parent interest in a long-term, home-based learning program? And so I have to tell you, and I think I'm, I think I see many of the parents I've spoken to. Thank you to the many parents who have called in and shared their thoughts and their questions. And I have been saying that with sufficient parent requests, the GOLP Learning Equity and Excellence Academy, a home learning academy will be an alternative to the transitional reopening schools model. It's just that we do need to make sure that we do have the interest in order to go ahead and, you know, post and, and find the teacher, teachers for. What I wanted to just kind of make your interested in knowing, well, what are the common parent interest themes? And why are parents still asking for a long-term, home-based learning program in light that all students will be, you know, participating in distance learning? So here are just a few of the very, very common reasons, the most common. First of all, it's the uncertainty of changing health conditions. Many of the family, they, they've expressed that they have family members with compromised immune systems. So at the time when we do transition back onto campus, you know, they, they would be concerned about sending their children back. Several mentioned that they have family members that have jobs that put them at a higher risk for spreading the virus. So that they would not want to send their children, you know, back to school with that concern. Many parents said that they were looking for the consistency of a full year of one model. That as opposed to possibly in the, the matrix that we showed you, moving between levels, being fluid depending on pandemic conditions. They'd like to commit to one model and they want to make sure that that model will be there for the whole year. Not halfway through, you know, pulling it out and saying we're back in school. So it's consistency of one full year model at least. They talked about the importance of establishing a relationship with one teacher at the beginning of the year and then carrying out that relationship throughout the year. Rather than, for example, starting with distance learning and then perhaps in November, when we, if we're reopening schools, then having to move to a distant, you know, a home learning teacher. So they wanted to establish the relationship with one teacher. Continuity of instruction, you start with instruction and you build those relationships at the beginning of the year. And that continuity of instruction would follow them throughout the year. All of the parents mentioned also that they really want to have a greater role in the learning program. They want the program to be well-rounded, to look at social, you know, emotional and academic. But the parents that called in are excited about the idea of being a learning partner with the teacher. And they would, they are really looking forward to being able to work with the home learning teacher in order to make sure that the mode of instruction is going to fit the needs of their children. It's not, for example, it wouldn't be six hours a day online or, you know, that they wanted to be a mixture of whether it's face-to-face instruction, but they would like to have textbooks and and workbooks that they could work with their children on and then a combination of online. So I I kind of put down some next steps. And as Karen mentioned, at five o'clock this evening, a blackboard call and an email was sent out to all families. And in that email, it said that if you go to the website, that you would see the GLE Academy cover letter. The cover letter kind of talked about the offering that the online academy, I mean, excuse me, the Home Learning Academy. And in that letter, you will find a link to a Survey Monkey request form. And so we're asking parents, it's it's not a survey of interest. It's more of a way that they can complete the request form for the home learning program for each child and just push submit, rather than having to complete a form and bring it into the district office. They can submit a request form. There is an FAQ and on the website with 20 questions. And the questions keep growing as I get questions from parents. So they'll have a quiz, an FAQ. There is a link to the Zoom informational meeting in English. It's on Monday at six o'clock. It'll be an informational meeting for parents to sign into and I'll take, you know, go through the FAQ and also take, you know, Q and A. And on Tuesday, I will be also doing the same, the same informational meeting in Spanish. We are asking families who are interested in the and want to sign the request form for the home learning program. We'd like to get as many requests as possible by Friday. It's a quick turnaround time by Friday, July 31st, because we need to have enough students enrolled in the program in order to then post for staff. I've been letting parents know that if we can get sufficient number of students enrolled by Friday, the 31st, we will give them an updated communication by Monday, August 3rd, because many parents are saying that they need to make plans for their children. I do have to report that we do have families that say if 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 we can't offer a long-term home learning model, that they that they will look for another online academy because they are interested in the long-term model. So I know it's a quick turnaround time. Staffing is going to be just really important. One of our hurdles we need to get on when we look at how many students that we have registered, we wouldn't want a teacher to have 20 students in grades TK through eight. We are hoping we get enough interest by parents that we can at least do smaller grade level spans, perhaps a TK two, you know, three, four, a six, eight, something like that. Because we know that the children at those different levels, primary, intermediate, and then the secondary, they have a lot of varying needs as far as beginning reading instruction, how much time they can spend online. And I know that Cleo and her team of teacher leaders have been really working on the ratio of instruction and also the modes of instruction. So what other information can I can I answer for you right now? I continue to get questions from parents and I will continue to update the FAQ, but maybe I can answer some of your questions right now.
I have a question. I'm wondering, what's the minimum number that that would keep this program going? And what's the current number that that we're at?
We don't, we we just, I didn't check tonight. We we just opened up the red, the the request, the Survey Monkey request. We just opened that up at five o'clock. I have about two dozen families that I've spoken to and but we need at least, you know, budget reasons, we need at least, I would say, 20 families to open up a class, except that, John, that ideally, ideally, like I said, you wouldn't want 20 students that were TK eight. So I am just hoping that, and I and I've been seeing a lot on social media with parents some interest, hoping we can get at least three different levels. And we could probably possibly do it with 18 students in each level. Is there any, are there any other questions? Or you may have also heard from our parents and community members, they may be asking questions.
All right. Okay, if I if I could just ask our directors to, Gracie, did you have a comment regarding the Home Learning Academy? All right. If if I could just, if I could ask the directors to summarize in this last area, okay, what is going to be different for us this time than what happened last spring? What will be different this time based on where we are right now and what we're working through? What is coming to mind when I ask that question? If you could please respond to that, Cleo, Lois and Donna?
Yeah, I I think we'll start with more accountability. We will be asked to monitor the progress of each individual child. And there's going to be assessments. We will be issuing grades. We have to take attendance. So if if children are not present when we're doing the live instruction, then they are absent and we will follow, as Donna already mentioned, protocols for for when children aren't aren't with us. The expectation right now is that we will provide the daily live instruction for every child, providing academic support for English learners, for foster youth, for homeless, for children that are receiving special education services. So we're trying to come up with the minimum number of minutes that we will ask teachers to hold that live interaction. In addition to that, we're asking teachers to provide live interaction, but to targeted groups. So whoever needs the support, then those children will receive additional face-to-face live interaction. And then we have to have a procedure for re-engaging students who are absent, as Donna said, 60% of the time. So children that are absent three days out of the week, then we have to have a process for which, how how we will get the children re-engaged. I can tell you that the groups that I met with today, again, a group of 19 outstanding teachers, we kind of felt that three days was waiting too long. So we're thinking that maybe we'll start some kind of process after the second day of the children not being engaged in the live instruction, that something, whatever it is that we develop, that will kick in. So that's from my end, Karen, that's what will be different this time with with distance learning.
Thank you. Lois and Donna?
I think I might add, also, we we did utilize instructional assistance during the emergency closure, but our instructional assistants will play a greater role in helping to support maybe the learning loss, the intervention. The parents, when I look at the home learning program, the difference will be that for these parents that select home learning, they will very much be a partnership, a closer partnership between the teacher and the parent to make sure individualized needs are met. And also that regardless of they're in the home learning program, we'll have the same additional supports available. For example, for social emotional learning, we will, we will have instructional assistance for small group support. There will also be a more coordinated effort to provide the textbooks, the workbooks, the consumables and any supplies needed for the students. We, a little bit different than than when it was a shelter in place and we were in school closure is that parents will be able to, you know, retrieve supplies or able to drop off the assignments at the school site, you know, depending on, you know, health conditions.
I was going to add, Donna, if you could comment on this as appropriate at this point, is that there are some school systems that had set up, say, childcare for essential workers within their communities. Could you talk about maybe some of the research that's going on in that area?
Yes, we, you know, Galt is a small community, but we have essential workers, including our teachers and some of our other staff who may be on campus, you know, doing some of this work and our community members who are essential workers. So I have a meeting again with Galt Parks and Recreation and we want to have a conversation about expanding the SOAR throughout our, all of our sites to provide a childcare for essential workers, but also for our staff and possibly redeploying our ACEs staff so that they can also be on site during the school day to support the distance learning that kids will be doing while the their parents are at work. Or perhaps parents have their children in childcare and they're having to do distance learning, but we would have staff on site where they could call in and staff on site could even support them during, you know, wherever they're at in childcare. We know that it's been successfully, even through the school closure, successfully done in many other districts in California. So I think that it's extremely critical that for Galt, that we work on providing that same level of care, as long as we can do it following health and safety guidelines.
We certainly would coordinate with county public health, you know, once we can can see what we can do. Thank you. Lois, what about you? Thoughts in terms of what will be different this time?
I think that, you know, Cleo used the word accountability. I think that's that's big for me this time, both as a as a parent too, that I have kids that are in distance learning. You know, this time around, thankfully, we've had more time to plan and prepare for this. Teachers have had more time, staff has have more time. You know, now there's going to be assessments, there'll be grades, there'll be great, I think more feedback for students and for parents this time around.
What about the deployment of technology?
Well, thankfully, I I think we did a good job with that. And thankfully, we were already pretty much one-to-one in this district. We had enough Chromebooks. And so we we still have enough Chromebooks. We're ordering more. I think in the area of technology, something that would be different this time is we should have a larger bandwidth. We are looking at increasing the bandwidth for hotspots. You know, hopefully, within the next three to four months, we will have Wi-Fi towers and that's going to take some time, but we are looking at, now that we know that teachers are going to have live lessons daily, we need to increase the bandwidth for students that are checking out the hotspots. So we're working on that.
Lois, most of our Chromebooks that were checked out are still currently with the families.
They are, only the middle school, only the middle school and sixth grade. So so we're we're pretty, we're in good shape there.
All right.
A question for Lois about hotspots. When a kid has a hotspot, how much are they have, they have unlimited time on the hotspot? Or is there a time before it runs out?
Um, do you mean the the data or like the timeframe and and during the day or at night?
I would wonder if, I wonder if it'd be the data then? Because I know I I know one kid specifically who has a hotspot and he see, and because he, he's always on online with in with my kids, but it seems like he runs out. I don't know if he's run out of data or if he runs out, throwing out a certain amount of time per month and he runs out, but it seemed like would be data, right?
Yes, that would be data. So yes, there are limits on how much data the hotspots have. And so that's what we are looking at increasing. But that that data goes very quickly with zooming. And then, of course, you know, we're reliant, we like rely so much on technology. And if you're using it for other things, for streaming videos or video games or things like that, you're going to go through that data very quickly. So we are looking at spending, using some of the emergency funds to increase the data.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait.
A quick question about the Chromebooks, Lois, for the sixth and seventh graders. Do we have a plan or a projected timeline? I mean, I'm assuming now that we're going to have to get those Chromebooks out before the school year starts?
We will, and I'll work with admin as they start to come back to work next week. And then with BFLC techs, as they start to come back within the next couple of weeks. But we will do that through the BFLCs at each of the school sites for the sixth graders at the elementary and then for the middle school. I would assume that the middle school admin will have same type of schedule as they did to collect, how they will have certain days, time schedules that families, you know, I think what they did last time, seventh grade came on one day, eighth grade came on one day. But we will do all that through the BFLCs.
Okay, thank you.
We'll probably need TK and kindergarten parents also.
Yes, true, Donna, we will need kindergarten and TK.
So we have learned a lot and we are really a system that learns continuously. And I think, again, the the efforts that, you know, beginning from last March to where we are right now, as I would think was quoted in the Galt Herald, I am confident about, you know, how we can launch the reopening through our transitional model that along with a home learning academy, if there's enough interest that we're seeking possible board action tonight and or further direction. I do have a comment to read when the time is right. And President Molson, I'm going to go back to you to see what you, how we'd like to progress from here.
I guess I'll ask, is there any more board discussion or comments? Covered a lot of ground. And it was fabulous, fabulous information. And Guru is amazing. I have people texting you, messaging me, you know, I didn't have a student and it's great. So if there's no more board discussion, we can read the public comment.
All right. All right, thank you, President Molson. This is a communication, an email that was sent from Shayna Gibbons. And it's in regarding to this agenda item. Hello, my name is Shayna. I am a nurse, mother of three, and a concerned citizen living in Galt. Two of my children, a fifth grader and a first grader, go to Marengo Ranch Elementary School. I'm writing this because of the recent news of schools offering exclusively a virtual learning platform. I am hoping that this board meeting will present options for children of essential workers along with special education, deaf, blind, autistic, and children with learning disabilities like ADHD that would inhibit their ability to learn at the fullest potential if only virtual is offered. Options might include allowing willing teachers to teach children of parents willing to put their children back in school, whether because of work or because of physical, mental disabilities. Parents could sign waivers to release liability if need be. Also, more thorough online live interaction with teachers from lesson through homework completion for any questions they may have. I can't teach exhausted kids at 7:00 PM every night, possibly weekend classes. Virtual learning would leave so many children behind. My son's first comment when I told him about the start of school was, so my teachers don't care about me? How am I going to log in and go to Zoom meetings if I'm at daycare all day? I wanted to cry and still do not have an answer for my son. Please consider all students when you plan for the opening of schools. We pay our taxes and raise our children in this country because all children are entitled to education, no matter what their situation. Please remember the following law and have options for every child. Thank you for your time and consideration. And this is the law that she included, California laws, Education Code, Title II, Elementary and Secondary Education, Division Four, Instruction and Services, Article Three, School Plans, 52853A. The school site council should develop a school plan, which shall include all of the following curricula, instructional strategies and materials responsive to the individual needs and learning styles of each pupil. That was the comment. That was the comment.
Right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, board members, do you feel comfortable taking this to a vote? I'm looking around. I have two head nods. Okay. All right. So then if there's no more discussion, then do I have a motion? For 192.107?
Really quick, I just had, just want to make one, one point. You know, as, as the governor has mandated kind of where the direction is with, with schools, I wonder, you know, with, with the superintendent in terms of, you know, how do we, where could there be, whether there's a waiver, some options of trying to address, you know, certain populations of, of students as we discussed before. But also, one thing we haven't really talked about are essential workers. And to what degree, you know, could schools provide some level of support if it's not necessarily instruction? So I think it's, you know, it's something we need to be aware of and thoughtful as, as hopefully the spike, you know, continues to, numbers continue to hopefully start to drop here in Galt and we can start resuming some level of in-person instruction. You know, how is it we can, you know, address needs of not only the learners, but also be thoughtful of our essential workers? So just wanted to bring that up.
May I comment briefly? Is that starting last Friday, from what the governor had shared and then listening to the state superintendent on Monday, along with some of, of his colleagues, state leaders, they did speak to, you know, again, this aspect of, of how we approach the needs of high, high needs learners. And that there is, there is what they're calling an elementary waiver that we are doing research on at this point to understand what that would take. Some of our initial research has, has shown that it looks like again, that we would need to certainly work with county public health officials along with the board to, you know, ensure that safety, that the health requirements would support that. And that if we are able to move forward, such as for children receiving special education services or English learners, that again, we, you know, we're following the, the procedures to be able to review that with not only you, but county health, public officials. So again, that is more research that I need to do. If I need to, I, 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 if it, if it is something that is clear very quickly, it could be that we could bring this forward at another meeting prior to the next regular meeting, if, if we're ready to do that. But we are researching that. And then secondly, in the area of serving essential workers, which includes teachers who may be coming to their classroom to prepare distance learning and have children that need childcare, we are looking, we are reaching out. Donna Whitlock, our Director of Ed Services is reaching out to other districts that were able to do this. And then also working with our, our SOAR, City of Galt, to see what could be set up. And Jennifer Collier, our Extended Learning Supervisor, again, prior to, you know, just before she had taken a bit of a break, had, has been keeping us in the loop about some of the changes with the ACEs extended, expanded learning resources and how that could possibly support that. So we do not have that set up yet, but we are looking into those things. And we, and we want to keep the board and we will keep, I think we can also continue to update FAQ so people can know kind of what we're finding out, even if we're not having a board meeting.
Thank you.
Well, just a quick question. And I mean, if we approve the plan as is tonight, is there anything that prevents us from including those items, you know, like essential workers? And, you know, those provisions as an addenda later on?
You know, I, I think that that is something that is your, your action tonight, if you're ready to do that, in terms of including that as part of the action. I, I would ask a board consideration in terms of also for us to accelerate our work with Guru so that we can get that, hit that running also, if the board is prepared to do that tonight.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve 192.107? Which includes going forward with Guru, correct?
Yes, and I think what I was, what I was hearing was that continue to look into the waiver process, to prioritize understanding, to look at implementing the waiver process, along with services for essential workers that may take place at our school setting or in the community, not only for teachers and, and Galt employee or elementary district employees, but other essential workers as well. I think I heard that as part of the motion.
Yes, yes, definitely. Need to find a more equitable way to do this. I, I would move to, to approve that with, with the addition of Guru and directing the district to, to seek a waiver flexibility with.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Why?
Thank you. I have a motion from John Gordon to approve Agenda Item 192107 with the addition of accelerating Guru and direction to seek a waiver for services for essential workers and employees. Seconded by Tom Silva, Grace Molson.
Hang on. Why, as you read that, as, I apologize, why you read that, what I didn't hear was the waiver in terms of serving our high needs learners. I've heard a waiver in terms of essential workers.
Serving high need learners.
High needs learners, including children with, who receive special education services, who are English learners. But then also to look at essential, serving essential workers at our school locations or other community locations so that we can keep moving forward in our school system for our children in the community. That's what I was hearing.
Correct. I apologize for not wording it quite that concisely. Thank you.
And I'm, I'm writing as you, as you spoke. Okay. Grace Molson?
Hi.
Wes Cagle?
Hi.
Matthew Felix?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very, very much for supporting what we believe is needed for our school system and to support our staff, our families in the community. Thank you very, very much.
And thank you for all your hard work and making distance learning. I'm trying to find the right word, verbiage here, but, and you know, having it graded and having it more structured going forth into the school year. So all your hard work is very appreciated. Okay, so moving on, we have Action Item 192.108.
I'm going to turn, again, if I could share this and then, and then turn this to our Director of Curriculum in terms of the revised school calendar, is that again, teamwork to do this and communication, collaboration. And I just want to recognize the efforts of our, of both of our unions so that in light of what we need to do to be able to effectively reopen. We want to be able to do that to the best of our abilities. And our unions worked very swiftly with us to work with our Director of Curriculum as well with the calendar that we bring before you for your consideration tonight. So Claudia Del Toro Anguiano, if you would please summarize for our board the background on the calendar.
Do we have the calendar to show? And if not, that's, that's fine.
It's okay. I don't have it open. Give me just a moment to open it for you.
Thank you.
She'll find it. Yeah, perfect.
Yes. So we realized early on that distance learning needed to be more structured, as Gracie described it. To do that, we also knew that we needed to find additional planning time. If you recall the, the survey that we sent out to parents, to children and to teachers, teachers requested time, time to do it better, time to learn from each other, time for more training. So while thinking about what teachers needed and thinking about the isolation that the kids were expressing, that they were experiencing, we're trying to find a way to see if we could provide time for teachers to do what I just mentioned, that the training, the planning, but also somehow start building relationships with children. So the thought right now is that we might use some of the days at the beginning of the school year to possibly bring students in. And if that's not possible, to do Zoom meetings with small groups to help the students understand, you know, what is different this time, help them know the teacher a little better, help the kids understand what are going to be the procedures, you know, for Zoom, what are going to be the procedures for submitting work and all that. So things that we typically do, you know, the first two days of school, we wanted to do that before we actually launched the distance learning. So in doing that, we looked at the calendar and we took some of the professional development days and we added those to the beginning of the school year. If you recall the calendar that was approved some months ago, we had a professional development day and a non-work day that aligned with the high school quarter breaks. So what we ended up doing is we converted those days into instructional days and we added the PD to the beginning of the calendar. So what we have right now is we have the same start date for all returning teachers. That's August 10. We have five additional teacher planning days at the start of the school year. We have the new start date for all students of August 20. So again, August 20 would be the first day of distance learning for the new school year. We have a new end of the first trimester, which is November 13. We have one professional development day, November 16. The end of the second try would be March 5. And we would have the same end date for all TK students of June 4. So we, we've kind of played with the days within the school year, maintaining the same end date, but changing the start date to give us those additional days at the beginning of the year to prep for the launch of distance learn. Any questions or thoughts?
No, this is impressive. I know a lot of the teachers from just what I heard prior to this wanted at least an extra week to get everything together so they can go forth, you know, with structured distance learning. And I'm also impressed that we can have the same end date as well, because I'm sure, you know, maybe summer plans next year, who knows? So again, thank you all, everyone involved, staff, administration, district, office, unions, working together to get this brushed about on it tonight. Very, very much appreciated, appreciated. So if there's no further comment or discussion from the board, do I have a motion to approve Item Number 192.108?
I'll make the motion.
Is that Wes? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wes Cagle to approve Agenda Item 192108, seconded by John Gordon. Grace Molson?
Hi.
Tom Silva?
Hi.
Matthew Felix?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Again, thank you all so much for your work.
Thank you.
All right. So next we have Item 192.109, Public Hearing of the 2021 Education Protection Act Use of Funds.
All right, this is an annual hearing and action item. An opportunity for the board to approve how the district will spend the Educational Protection Act funds that we receive annually. For the 2021 school year, we will receive approximately 2.8 million in EPA funds. We are, we do have in the budget right now to use these funds to pay salaries for regular education teachers. We cannot use these funds for administrative cost at all. That $2.8 million will cover approximately almost about one and a half, almost two teacher, two school sites for regular education teachers. And so we need board approval on our plan to spend these EPA funds for regular education teachers.
Okay, so right now I'm going to open it up for the public hearing.
Why could, are there any comments at all in the chat box?
No, there are no comments in the chat box.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing if there's no comments. And then we will move on to Item 192.110, which is the board consideration of approval of the 2021 Education Protection Act Use of Funds. And does anyone need any more background from Lois on this?
I just got a couple of questions. So these funds, now does that free up other funds to spend somewhere else? And does this funds, does it have to be spent this year?
Yes, they, they do. These funds are part of our total LCFF apportionment. So it's, it's all part of our LCFF calculator what we are allocated. It's just that where these funds come from, there is law stating that we can't use these funds for administrative costs. And also with that law, it does have to go for board approval on how we would use these, these funds. But it is, it doesn't free up anything else. It is, it's part of our LCFF apportionment each year.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, if there's no more discussion, then do I have a motion for 192.109?
I'll move to approve that correctional, by the way. It's Item 192.110. But I'll move to approve that.
Oh, hold on. Did I not, I didn't flip my binder, my page. Sorry, yes, 192.110. Sorry about that.
True.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve Agenda Item 192110, seconded by Wes Cagle. Grace Molson?
Hi.
John Gordon?
Hi.
Matthew Felix?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Right, thank you. Next action item is 192.111. Board consideration of approval of Resolution Number One, approving a site lease, a sublease, and a construction service agreement relating to the McCaffrey Middle School Track and Field Project.
Right. So SMB James Construction has completed their pre-construction services that the board approved a couple of months ago. So they have been out
So they have been out there and they've been out there with their subcontractors as well and evaluating the work that needs to be done, creating timelines and creating a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP, for what it would take to construct the track and field at McCaffrey. The first GMP that came back, came back a little too high. We couldn't afford it. We had to look at a few things that we could cut out. We originally had a cost estimate for an eight lane synthetic track. We have scaled that down to six lane, so it's more affordable for us. We found out that an eight lane track is really more typical for a high school. A six lane track is something that is more, what you would see at a middle school level. And so that's something that I worked with. I did talk to Ron Raymer and the PE Department about that, and they agreed that if we couldn't afford the eight lane track, that a six lane track would be sufficient. The PE also was hoping to get a long jump in the middle of the field. We did have to cut that out at this time. It just, it was, it was too much. We had to, we really wanted to get the project down to about the $1.5 million. And so we were able to do that. We got it down to about $1.6 million. It would be, we would be using developer fees for this project. We, we have sought legal counsel on how we can spend developer fees, what you can, how you can use it, how you shouldn't use it, or how you can't use it, and do have an opinion that developer fees would be a good use of these funds. The GMP with the outlined detailed cost estimates is in the back of the last lease leaseback contract for your review. It's attached to the Construction Services Agreement. There's a, on your cover sheet, it tells you, it lists out the scope of work. Of course, with the track, that would come all of the curbing, the drainage, the irrigation, electrical underground that we would need for future uses, things that we can't afford right now, but we want to make sure we have the underground structure, infrastructure we would put in for security cameras and Wi-Fi, been in coordination with Min Doe, our technology coordinator, to get that rolling once infrastructure is in place. It would be a SOD inner field. We're looking at underground work also for more water fountain, drinking fountains. There will be electrical wall that will, they call it a CMU wall that will house all of the electronics that we need out there. It would be, it'll be a very nice project for the middle school. It is, of course, our only middle school for Galt. It would, it would be a beautiful track and field out there if we were able to move forward with this. Any questions about the project or timeline? They would start right away pending board approval. They would start right away. They would be able to finish beginning of November. That's the estimated timeline for completion on this project.
Lois, I just have a question about will public access. Will there be fencing around this project when it's completed? And what are our intentions in terms of public access? And the reason I ask that is because I live close to Walker Park and I've seen some uses and abuses of the synthetic field there at Walker Park. So I have some concerns about how do we control public access to it? I mean, obviously, it's, it's, you know, I think we need to be able to share it at the, at the appropriate times, but we also need, you know, for paying for it, we need to be able to protect it and preserve it.
Yes, we will have it completely secured with fences and we will have security cameras out there as well. That's part of the electrical groundwork that we're having done. So we will have multiple cameras out there and we will have it. Yeah, we'll have it, we will have it secured. I have met with Parks and Rec with the city a couple of times and let them know about the project. You know, right now, they don't feel they would need a joint use agreement to use, to use the field or to use the track, but that could change. But they, I, we are in communication. They know that we want to move forward with this project. And who knows what could happen there with Parks and Recs and Rec and how we might have a joint use agreement.
Excellent project. Thank you.
Lois, I know that you went over the financing of this months ago. Could you remind people why this is a good use of funds and why it's not going to cost the district in other areas to do this project?
Yes, developer fees, really strict guidelines on, on how you can spend or what you can use developer fees for. You could only use developer fees for new construction or new development to a school site based on increased enrollment or to serve the students, upcoming students or new students in the community. McCaffrey fits that because it is our only middle school. You can also use developer fees to include athletic fields. Athletic facilities is an excellent use of developer fees in the code. You cannot use developer fees for, for salaries. You, you can't move your developer fees in a general fund. You cannot use your developer fees for routine maintenance. And so that was something else we were really looking at to determine, you know, okay, there's, we, we know we have routine maintenance needs in this district. Can we use developer fees for that? And we can't. So if we could, if you could move these, these fees into general fund to use for other purposes, you know, based on, on finances and, and the budget at this time, you know, we would do that. But that's not an allowable expense of, of these fees.
Thank you. I understand.
Are there any other questions or board discussion? Okay, so if there's number, question, do I have a motion for 192, should I have on the right one here, 192.111?
I'll move to approve Item 192.111, Grace.
All right, and I will second that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion from Matthew Felix to approve Agenda Item 192.111, seconded by Grace Molson. Tom Silva?
Hi.
John Gordon?
Hi.
Wesley Cagle?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. I think this will be a great addition to the middle school and resource for our students and our community.
And Lois, I also wanted to thank you, being a former McCaffrey admin on behalf of the staff at McCaffrey and the kids, thank you so much for prioritizing that track. We have been dreaming about that for years. So thank you for making that a reality. Appreciate your time and effort with that.
No, yeah, I can't wait to see the kids and just see how they're using it.
Oh, all right. Last Agenda Item. 192.112, Board Consideration of Approval of the 2021 Expulsion Panel Members.
Okay, well, I'd like to start out by saying that it's a, I'm happy to report that we have an extremely low expulsion rate in our district. This last year, we had zero expulsions. However, should a school site recommend a student for expulsion, the student and the family have the legal right to an expulsion hearing. And Code 48918D states that expulsion hearings may be heard by the board. And the board may appoint a panel of administrators to act in that capacity. Annually, we bring the expulsion panel, panel members to the board for consideration for approval. The 12 panel members that you have in your board packet are both site and district administrators. So we need your approval in the, in the, in the event that we, we do need to go to hearing for an expulsion. Do you have any questions? We recommend approval for this item.
Yeah, I don't. This is pretty standard. We do it every year. And I have to say, with school ending, you know, March 13th, that's very impressive that there were no expulsions up to that date.
I think the year, yeah, the year before, we were, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, we were either at zero or possibly one. So, you know, school sites do a lot of work, both socially, emotionally, restorative practices to look at other avenues. And when we do come back into, when we are able to come face to face, we still are planning to move forward with the, with the Student Health and Wellness Center at McCaffrey. And so, you know, we also look forward to that also, you know, kind of heading off any expulsions that we may have at the middle school level. Oh, I'm sorry. And we have our two, and we did, we're awarded a $6,000 toupee grant for tobacco prevention education. And that will also, you know, we will be also using those, that funding to support students who, you know, may need some additional support.
Nice, congratulations.
Congratulations to Jennifer Collier. That was her first toupee grant that she wrote and she was awarded it.
All right, so are there any questions or discussion? This is pretty routine business. Okay, so there's no further discussion. The drive a motion, Action Item 192.112. I'll make a motion to approve Action Item 192.112. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Molson to approve Agenda Item 192.112, seconded by Wes Cagle. Tom Silva?
Hi.
John Gordon?
Hi.
Matthew Felix?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And are there any public comments for topics not on the agenda?
No, there are no public comments at this time.
Okay, so if there are no further public comments, then thank you, everyone, for your hard work and we will see you next month. Everything is much appreciated. All right.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned. Hi, guys.